Okay, are we ready? Looks like it's 6:32, open session begins. If we could stand for... Flag, please. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay standing, please, I'm sorry. We have Pastor David to do the abrogation.
Let's pray together. Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, we come in thanksgiving for the privilege and the opportunity you give us to come before you, to seek your leading and your blessing upon this city and upon those that you have called and placed in a position of leadership. So, Father, tonight, we come before you to ask for your blessing on Canyon Lake, California. And, Lord, we ask for your blessing tonight on those who have been given the responsibility to lead, as decisions are made and discussions come up, that you might give unity, that you might give humility and strength as those discussions are resolved and move this city in a direction, Lord, that would bring honor to you. I thank you as reflecting on last week in the National Day of Prayer and the opportunity that we had to gather together, Lord, and just reflect upon the blessings you have brought this country and how privileged we are to live in it. So, may you bless and may you lead, and may your will unfold for this great city, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Do we get a roll call? Councilmember Bonner?
Here.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Here.
Councilmember Hagerty?
Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Here.
And Mayor Warren?
Here.
Okay, approval of the council agenda, are there any changes?
I move to approve it. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Okay, four with one absent. Special presentations, Chamber of Commerce announcements tonight, Jordan gets the pleasure of it.
Yes, I do, and this is probably going to be longer than my entire report. All the council, or I shouldn't say all the council, all of the members of the Chamber of Commerce had a ribbon-cutting ceremony tonight for the new market in Lake Elsinore, which continues tomorrow morning, but all of the people were invited, so they've given me the job. So, I'm going to read what they printed for me. I think I just said this, but "I was asked to chair the Chamber News with all of you tonight, as many Chamber Directors and members are at the soft opening of the new Grocery Outlet Bargain Market in Lake Elsinore. Grocery Outlet occupies the space where Bed Bath &amp; Beyond was on Central Avenue near Costco. Everyone is invited to the Grocery Outlet tomorrow for the grand opening celebration beginning at 9:00 a.m. The Chamber would like to thank the P.O.A. candidates and residents who attended our recent Meet the Candidates event. We encourage anyone who has not yet voted to drop your ballot off in person at the lodge on Election Day, May the 10th between 8:00 and 9:00 a.m. Excuse me. The annual Chamber Golf Tournament is coming up Saturday, May the 19th, at the Canyon Lake Country Club. This tournament is an important fundraiser for the Chamber in their efforts to support junior golf and their many programs throughout the year. So, sign up to play at the Chamber office, Pack, Wrap &amp; Post, or the Pro Shop. There's great prizes, raffle drawings, and two great hole-in-one opportunities. You could win a 2018 Yamaha Y-XZ, I guess that's probably right, which is a side-by-side ATV sponsored by exit Blue Water Realty and Yamaha Corporation, or a new golf cart sponsored by Prestige Golf Cards. There's still time to donate a raffle basket for the tournament. It's a great way to promote your business and support this great community event. The Chamber invites everyone to participate in its second annual ball drop. The ball drop will take place after the golf tournament. Participants do not have to enter the tournament to participate, and the winner need not be present. Golf ball numbers can be purchased for $10 each at the Chamber office, Pack, Wrap &amp; Post, or the Pro Shop. The purchaser provides their contact information and receives one number per ball, not the actual golf ball. Using a mechanical lift, the hopper filled with the numbered golf balls will be lifted and dropped all at once over a hole on the practice range. The purchaser of the numbered ball that lands in the bottom of the hole will receive half the money collected from the ball drop sales. A limited number of balls are available. The Chamber would also like to welcome a few new members. Carmichael's Caviary and Papa's Barn, Grocery Outlet Bargain Market, JDI Dance Company, McVicker's Law Family Mediation Center. And that concludes my report for the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
I'll leave. Love you. The next was going to be Student of the Month. Travis Summers apparently wasn't able to make it tonight, so we will get in contact with him and make sure that he gets his certificate, but he was Student of the Month for April. And the next is, a discussion in May is Mental Health Month proclamation. Is Ruth?
Rita.
Oh, Rita, I'm sorry.
So, this is the Mental Health Month proclamation, whereas a person's mental health is considered to be an integral part of an overall health and wellness, whereas in one in five adults' experiences, mental health conditions in any given year, and one in 25 adults' lives with mental illness such as major depressive bipolar disorder or schizophrenia. And whereas approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14 and three-quarters begin at the age of 24, and whereas long delays, sometimes decades, often occur between the onset of symptoms when the individual can't get help. And whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery, and whereas it is important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help when it is needed. And whereas every person and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. Whereas the public education and civil activities can encourage mental health, promote the wellness and recovery of those with mental health condition, and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Therefore, let me proclaim the City of Canyon Lake issues this proclamation to signify its support of greater awareness of mental health and joins with the Riverside County Behavioral Health Commission on its observance of May as Mental Health Month for 2018.
Thank you. I want to give this to you, everything she just read is here for you. This is such an important issue, and I want you to be able to say a few words. Normally, you would not eat your back to us, but we'll hear you just fine, and I want you to teach us, I want you to talk to these people. So, I'm going to turn this around, speak into the mic, so that we can get you up on camera and on the recorder, and that's for you.
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, I do want to thank you all for being here, and then also, my name is Rita Benlin.
Closer to the mic, Rita.
I've been a longtime owner here since 1974, so I'm very familiar with Canyon Lake. I serve on the regional behavioral health advisory boards. We no longer want to say mental, we're saying behavioral health, so people feel comfortable about getting help. I've been a longtime career, many family members here. Also, I was elected and asked to be on the board. And being on the board, asking anyone that would like to be on the board, is about advocacy. I worked in mid-county, which is this area, and I've traveled a little bit with some of them, but you do get lunch and you get gas money, so it's not like it's all out of pocket. So, but it's one of the things, as myself, mother, a grandmother, and a great-grandmother now, I feel that it's time for wisdom to step in, even though I'm not up with computers. But on behalf of Riverside University System, behalf of Department of Behavioral Health Commissions, I would like to thank the mayor, and also presenting this with the proclamation, I'm very proud that Canyon Lake is involved. We appreciate the support of the county Riverside, continual efforts to raise mental health or behavioral health and substance abuse awareness within the county. The proclamation will be displayed at our upcoming May, which is, by the way, it was May 5th, in Paris, we had over 2,000 people show up. Just a little bit of activity that's going on, where I come from the film industry when I was very young, so we're starting to do a lot of movies. So, people come in and learn about their brain, because it is an organ. And I'm also a teacher, which I'm helping those learn. There's activities. Also, I'm going to be having a booth here with Riverside Behavioral Health yesterday, so we hope that you'll come up to yesterday booth and learn more about all the thousands of things that are going on. January, we got a full grant, and we're all excited, and I'm almost like, yay, we finally got it. So, there's a lot going on, we're training police officers, we're training anybody that wants to have a healthy family member. So, thank you very much on behalf of my friends and everyone.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And please, I know what we think we can have on our website and on our calendar, so that people have...
In the library, just say I can leave since we can.
And we'll see you Tuesday.
Thank you.
Okay, your turn to read the public comment statement.
Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on the agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. Completed form is to be submitted to the City Clerk prior to the individual being heard by the City Council. The City Council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you are commenting on the agenda item, your comments will be heard that time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note, if you're addressing the City Council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the City Council may only do the following: refer the matter back to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give very limited factual response.
And we have Samantha.
Hi.
Sorry, dear.
I just wanted to talk about the roadway inn and suite that's behind Pepe's. Last week, my husband, my 10-month-old daughter, and I were accosted by a young man that was occupying the hotel, and he tried to get my husband out of the car, and I kept telling him to get in the hotel, that if he wanted to make money, and we tried to get away from him, and it just kind of got more aggressive at that point, and he tried to turn off our car engine by forcing himself in the car, but we were able to get away. And I personally have seen what I believe to be hookers and drug activity and drug deals constantly going on at that hotel, and I'm scared, I'm scared to go home, I'm scared to be in a stop car anywhere, and I'm sure that I don't just speak for myself, it's a very bad hotel, there's a lot of stuff that's just bad about it, bad people, and I just want to feel safe again in my community.
Thank you, Samantha. This disturbs me a lot last night, don't go away yet, because we may be able to give you some more information, and I know we're not supposed to have a give-and-take, but last night I had a situation also, and not only have we heard, probably anybody here has had. So, what I would like is, I'd like to know, how many trouble calls have we had? What is their nature? This can't be good for our community. We were on the golf cart, we were open air, and somebody was approaching us. This was Samantha, her husband, and her 10-month-old baby in the car, and he was trying to get in. It's all centered around this hotel. I don't know how much we could possibly be getting in taxes to make it worth the trouble that we're spending and the danger to our citizens, so we need to figure out what we can do as a city, whether it's extra code enforcement, or if it's, what do we have to do to clean this up? Anytime, you can go through there and see what we mean, you don't have to knock on any doors, although doors should be knocked also. So, thank you for bringing that to us.
So, when did it happen?
I'm sorry, hang on just a second. Did you make a police report?
The police were called, and I believe there's a report, I haven't followed up on it yet.
Okay, okay. Do you remember, was he, what did he look like? Was he short-haired, long-haired?
I didn't see the police, the officer that responded, we had left.
Okay.
We're coming back.
No, I don't believe you. It was probably Deputy Remington, I think?
It may have been. Samantha, I'm Raymond Husky, Lieutenant with the Police Department. When did this occur?
Last Wednesday, around...
So, a week ago?
Yeah, around 6:00 o'clock.
And was it you or your husband who called?
It was me initially, but I was distraught, so my husband had to finish the call.
Okay. When you're done there, will you give me your name, I'll research the actual call, and also look at the calls for service at the road.
Thank you. Randy, you've got a question?
Oh, no, she answered the question, I was wondering when it happened, and I wanted to know if the lieutenant knew anything about this, but it sounds like you're not aware, at least at this time.
Correct.
Broad daylight, that's not acceptable. Okay, thank you.
I just want to comment from the county, I just come from Criminal Justice Committee, anything that's said here, I pass on. So, just to let you know, you're going to be safe, because all of my grandchildren grew up here, and I'm going to make sure that it's safe.
Perfect. Perfect, thank you, yes it is. Thank you, Samantha. Jack Wombley?
With reference to the comments on the voting, as of 10:00 this morning, we were about 25 votes short of a quorum for the P.O.A. Hopefully, we would pick those up, but if anybody's out there listening, get your vote in, because it costs us between $1,000 and $1,500 every time we can't make the quorum, and it carries over to Saturday. So, I would hope that our people, you know, out of 4,800 people, and we can't get 1,536 votes is just terrible. Anyway, I encourage everybody, get out there and vote, we need 26 more votes.
Thank you, Jack.
Just as a reminder, they can actually go to the meeting tomorrow, it's on Thursday, correct, Jack?
Yeah, that'll be tomorrow morning.
From 8:00 till 9:00, and they can actually bring their ballots then.
That's correct.
Any further comments? Okay, consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, just before you approve the consent calendar, staff's asking you, were you pulled check number 2, I'm sorry, 243? That check's no longer needed, and it's been voided.
Okay, thank you.
So, make sure that the motion will reflect that check number.
Okay.
Heron what number was that, 241?
24243.
Anybody else have any questions on the consent calendar? Can I get a motion in a second?
I'm over to approve the consent.
With the deduction of the one?
Right.
Second, Jordan?
I'm sure it's open.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Councilmember Bonner?
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Yes.
And Mayor Wine?
Yes.
Motion approved to approve the consent calendar with check number 24243 pulled. Okay. So, that takes us down to nine, schedule of future events. We do have meetings coming up, but we're also going to start our Veterans Committee meetings probably in July this year, so that we get a little bit of a head start from last year. So, anybody who is interested in being a part of that, it's an all-volunteer committee, we do great things, if you haven't seen the Veterans Day event, you've got to make it, because it is really something to be there. Just contact me directly, contact City Hall, get ahold of us somehow, raise your hand, and we'd love to have you. Okay, business items. Discuss and approve one-year extension of fire contract with Riverside County Fire City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, before using the one-year contract extension with Riverside County for fire protection services, as we know, when we signed the contract last year, we had to give the county notice by the end of December of last year whether or not we wanted an extension. We did that, and this is basically the other end of the obligation, we're entering a one-year deal that requires us to go to a three-person engine company, currently we're in a two-person engine company, and we staff ours currently with a medic, and county staffing, their minimum staffing level is three persons with a medic. That was part of the initial agreement that we're in right now. As you can see, I've given you out earlier this evening, we got costs, changes to the contract yesterday, and if you have questions about that, I have the town chief here, Michelle Bishow, who can probably speak to that. It's strictly set staffing, so the initial, it's a $6,000 increase as to what was originally your packet. As you can see, it's about $700,000 increase to go from two people to three people. We've, you've received the letter of support from Congressman Calvert, we've applied for the safer grant, three-year grant, I believe it's for 2.4 million over three years, and that will, in our estimation, that will help us fund that third person for three years. Hopefully, along with that, getting the extension to the UT, and then hopefully working on some regional issues, maybe, we'll be able to keep those costs as they create, hopefully to a minimum, or figure out what we're going to do that's best for the City of Canyon Lake, you know, Mayor Pro Tem Green's been working hard on the elected side. We're both been trying to figure out what to do to help contain those costs, because they're just going to go up.
I understand it. Are there any comments from the council on this?
Well, I just want to ask Larry, at the Finance and Planning Committee, you had some questions about some of the language, did you get satisfaction?
The questions I had were on the contract. Correct, on the, yeah. And did we run it past Betsy?
We did run it past Betsy, and we're pretty much, right, Betsy, we're pretty much over her, we're starting.
We are going to go with this agreement.
Okay.
After the presentation, excellent, on optional inspection program, we'll send the county manager telling what we want to do, but when we compared this contract to that for other cities, which had that independent program?
Right.
We were comfortable going forward.
Okay, okay.
But, Betsy, I'm not totally following you, just because it's okay for other cities doesn't make it necessarily good for us.
Yeah, we can't, there you...
Talking to Mike.
Betsy, I didn't follow you exactly, just because other cities find it acceptable doesn't make it acceptable for Canyon Lake.
The question that Larry had, I believe, the Mayor Pro Tem had, was whether or not we needed to add language, we should allow you to do an independent inspection program. A variety of other cities with the same contract do that, and they have not needed a contract exception. So, our view is, we're good to go with this one. If, in fact, the county decides we need to put language in, we can revise the contract, but I think we're going to be fine, since this doesn't govern your inspection program if you were to run yourself.
Okay.
Other than that, as you all know, this contract is not the kind with language we can negotiate, unfortunately.
Yes.
Although it has been substantially improved since your litigation against them.
Are there any other questions?
I do have a couple.
Okay, we can discuss after... Barry? I do want to say, Mary, we had a discussion before we came down here, we talked about the appropriate attire for City Council meetings. Oh, that's right, it's not the audience, I'm sorry, you're fine.
I think you look fine.
Mary, I agree with you.
Thank you, councilmember, and mayor for an opportunity to speak. I did communicate with you, the email, the council, and the city manager, and everybody, so you know basically how I feel about this. I know it's kind of a dumb deal, committed to it last year, but nevertheless, I think this is a major commitment, major expense. I think more, just a little bit more discussion by the council to explain some of the, what else is going on, that's going to give us some sense of future that we can survive, and I would like to hear that discussed this evening, if you could.
One thing I will say, it's a one-year, not a three-year, so we are still in the works of other options for the city, I don't know how many we can discuss here.
Yeah, not at this time. But rest assured, Barry, we are looking at many options. I know, unfortunately, some things have happened that have caused us to take a couple of steps back, and as you're aware, from being on the council, we're kind of in this unique situation where it's one provider for everybody around here, and so that's the other thing that's kind of ties our hands, but we are actively pursuing other ways in order to get the service that the citizens want, by also being prudent with funds, much better cost.
I would expect that you were doing that, I just wanted to have a little bit more presentation on that.
Right, unfortunately, and I think Mayor Pro Tem Green, who all suspect of it, unfortunately, we're not at that point yet.
Okay, and one other thing, though, is about the grant, what happens if we don't get the grant approved?
Is your mic on, Barry?
I know, you have to trust me, speaking very lively. What happens if we don't get that grant approved?
No, I was asking, Barry, if his mic was on.
Yeah, it's on.
I just have a soft voice and short嗓子.
If we don't get the grant, then we will have to use that money, we'll set aside in the budget for reserves for this one year, and I'll have a lot of sleepless nights finding out a solution.
Actually, I can speak on it.
Barry, we're optimistic, and I think that's what we're going to have to rely on, is the ability to be able to search everything and negotiate, you know what the negotiations were several years ago, I don't have to explain them to you, and you know that we certainly, maybe that, maybe it's improper, I'm going to say we love CAL FIRE, and we know what they can do for us, and we know that all the cities are suffering from the same thing, and perhaps something is going to happen universally to all of the cities, so that this can be corrected, because we, well, I'm speaking for myself, I guess, but I certainly want to see CAL FIRE continue providing the services for us, hopefully at a reduced price. So, bear with us, we love seeing you in your shorts here, so come anytime.
Yeah, one thing we have going for us is, you have in front of you is the letter from Congressman Calvert, it's the first time I've actually in my career had a sitting congressman support such a large grant, so we think that's going to, I think, bode well with the grant committee.
It was quite a letter, if we can put copies. If you want to speak, just let her know that she'll speak again, but hang up, because you have to do it up here eventually.
And we can put that up on our website.
Yes, please. It's very hard to say, trust us, we're working on it, and have you trust us, we're working on it. You have to know that, and Barry knows from personal experience, that this is a long, hard process, and we have many roads we have to go, and then when that's a dead end, we have to try another. And sometimes the road that we think is just as promising as it could be, and all's going to be good, we get there, we realize that they took it off in a different direction, and we're not part of that train. So, it is very frustrating from our end, and I know how frustrating it is from your end, because I live in this community too. The only thing I can tell you is that we are actively, daily, working on the very best solution at the very best price, so that Canyon Lake is covered the very best way, and that's, I can tell you that, we can't tell you all the details, because we're working with so many other entities, and it wouldn't be fair to them, so. Mary, you had something to add?
Other than, we did meet with the congressman and the staff, we explained different things that are going on in our community. They had, really, their chief of staff, Congressman Calvert, has been in contact with our administrative assistant, and has actually shepherded through Congressman Calvert, through the Washington, DC process, into the grant application process. That is a big leap for us, for the size of our city, so don't uncross your fingers, because anything can happen, but it gives us one of the best chances in this region to secure that grant.
I was just going to say that, because I'm an entrepreneur myself, and I understand what you're going through, it usually takes about three years to really get a business moving.
Yeah.
And as far as, I don't want to say this too loud, it's who you know, not what you know sometimes, and unfortunately, I have a great background, I grew up the same as President Trump.
Okay, so we need a motion and a second, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll start with the motion. I'll start with the motion.
And we need a roll call vote for this?
Councilmember Bonner?
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Green?
Yes.
And Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Motion approved four zero with Councilmember Hagerty, absent.
At this point, we're going to move to our public hearing. Will you read the, the notes on this?
This is the public hearing for resolution number 2018-09, approving the conditional use permit 18-01, and a notice of exemption to allow for the operation of a pet supply, pet grooming, pet daycare, and overnight boarding facility located at 24370 Canyon Lake Drive North, Unit 4, Canyon Lake, California 92587.
Thank you. Okay, we will open the public hearing at 7:03, and we have a staff presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers and staff. Thank you, Stephanie, for reading that. Doesn't leave a whole lot left for me to say, but this is a conditional use permit. It's been applied for by Kristi Bahina. She's with Canyon Canines, and she's proposing to open and operate a pet supply, pet grooming, a daycare facility, and overnight boarding facility for animals. This will be located at the Eastport Shopping Center. It's at 24370 Canyon Lake Drive North, Suite 4, which is a downstairs unit, it's where the thrift shop used to be. While this pet supply and grooming and daycare facility is permitted use in the commercial zone, the overnight boarding is considered a conditional use and requires approval from the city council. The hours of operation, I've put down eight to six, but after a text or an email from the applicant, she thinks that her clients will be better served if she's open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week, and she'll also have someone in attendance from 6:00 AM till 9:00 PM to service the animals that are being boarded overnight. Parking, this is an existing facility, so there's adequate parking to serve this type of business. Noticing environmental, notices, public notices were hand-delivered to all tenants in the facility, and they were mailed to all the property owners with 300 feet, and it's also posted here at the library, the post office, and City Hall. So, with that, I'd like to make a recommendation. The applicants here and staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution 2018-09, adopt findings, and approve conditional use permit 1801, finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15, 301, which is an existing facility of the SECA guidelines. Do you have any answer, any questions?
Thank you. Randy?
At the public safety, I asked a question, and you answered, you said you would send a notice to 300 people in, in the area?
Mailed.
Mailed.
Yes, sir.
And you got no feedback, negative feedback?
I have not received any comments or anything, feedback, no, sir.
Okay, thank you, that's important.
Yes, sir.
The number of animals that they'll have overnight?
Well, there's two types of permits I've learned from the Animal Friends of the Valley. There's a Class 1 permit that allows up to 10, and then there's a Class 2 permit that is for over 10. I believe this facility is probably going to be set up for 10 or less.
Any other questions from council?
Big question, I don't think I heard, I think you said the hours were changed, but in this draft, it says the overnight boarding shall be 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. That's not overnight.
No, no, there's nobody there overnight. There'll be somebody there from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. From what I've learned typically, these animals are left to themselves overnight. Once the operation close, they do have cameras that can monitor the inside of the facility, but no one is there attending to the animals.
Is there a monitoring system?
There'll be a camera monitoring system.
Camera monitor?
Yes, sir.
To the central station or to the individual?
I'll have to ask the applicant, because I don't have that answer.
Well, that's a good segue. If we have no other questions from council, we can have testimony from the proponents. Stephanie's got.
Kristi.
Owner Christina, or Christina, I'm sorry.
My name is Kristi Bahina. I am representing Canyon Canines. This is Monster. We are a working team. I'm currently the owner of Styles and Smells Group Photography. I have a clientele of over 200. I do about 50 dogs a month by myself.
So, if you could move to the microphone, please, so they can get it up on there?
Sure. I am planning to expand my services into daycare, boarding, and retail, and then just move my grooming over to the Eastport area. We don't have anything as far as boarding or daycare in our area, which is a big drag to me and my family, because when I go away, like, we just have nowhere to, to keep our pets. My pets are family to me. So, the, the whole part of the boarding that we're planning to extend, or sorry, to expand is going to be, we are going to have kennels, so it's not going to be cage-free like some places are. They're going to have their own individual suites, and have, you know, comfortable places to go during the night. It is an all indoor facility, so we are going to plan to have the indoor pet relief areas. There are going to be drains into the floor, which we are going to put in. And then, we just wanted to address this, the sound issue that people might kind of be afraid of. We are going to do insulation in our drywall and the ceiling, so we just kind of wanted to put that out there, because we kind of have thought of everything that everyone might be concerned with. The camera and the alarm situation that you were asking about, we would like to have like a, an alarm company, so that if anything goes off, like fire alarm, you know, carbon dioxide, anything like that, then it's going to alert them, but it's also going to alert me too. So, that way, we're going to have the alarms, and we're also going to have the cameras that I can check in on any time, you know, if any movement outside of like our kennel area is happening, then we know that we need to check in. So, I think that's kind of it for my kind of overview. Do you have any questions for me?
Do you, am I using the, the dog park facilities at the, at the POA house across the street?
It's been a consideration of mine. I think if we got the okay to use it, I think it would be a draw to some of my clients that their pets are going to have outdoor time, because some people are okay with all indoor, and some people want outdoor time, walks, playtime. So, it's something that I've been thinking about, but I would want to get permission for, just to make sure that it is okay.
So, would the POA have to give them permission?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question on disposal, feces. And also, I assume that if there, if drains are going to be put in, that that's going to require additional permitting from the city and so forth, so that we know where those drains are leading to and what, so just follow up with our, our planning department, please. Feces disposal.
So, that's just going to be in the trash receptacles. We do have the trash day over there, it's going to be three times per week, which is, and I hate to say it, but more times than most people will pick up their home yard, so we're not worried about smell or anything like that. I will say, I do live right behind the location, and if I thought that it was going to be an issue for smell, noise, or anything like that, I wouldn't put it behind my own house. So, I'm not worried about it. So, I'm literally living and standing behind it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I guess we hear from any, any opponents. Are there anybody, is anybody listed? Okay, then, thank you very much for the presentation. Then we'll close the public hearing at 7:12, I think that's a record.
That's a record.
Okay, further discussion by city council? You can bring Monster anytime you want.
I, I think it will be a welcome addition to our business community. You've obviously identified an area, because a lot of people don't, their pets or their kids, and, and they want a safe place to send them, close to home, so I think it's going to fit very well in our community. Thank you.
So, a motion and a second to direct staff?
I make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for the occupancy as it listed on the item 11.1.
I second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Bonner?
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Green?
Yes.
And Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
Okay, city manager comments?
Just went briefly, and I think probably Mayor Protem Green will speak to this, this Saturday. We're having staff and the original preparedness group, we're doing an exercise. We've, like, or has been able to secure some grant funding for us, and we've been able to outfit a lot of new tech in our EOC. And so, we'll be firing all that up, working on our, on our areas. We have a disaster, you know, we have a EOC plan, we'll be working on that, making sure everybody's aligned with, with their job duties will be in case, in case of, of an event. Obviously, with the small, the small staff that we have, so it will be interesting running the four different areas within an EOC, but luckily, Mayor Green's group is a large group, so we'll have, we'll have a lot of support there. So, we're just going through a basic exercise, I think it'll be about two, three hours. Is everybody familiar with the EOC, what happens at an event, how it, how we open the EOC, notify the county, and get things kicked off, do damage assessment and initial briefings, and request, and obviously, any requests for any aid that we would need from the county.
Need a extra participation, should we put a call out, are you good?
I'm good. Right.
We could, we could use some victims. Barry, Barry says he's stepping right up, so.
I'll look right here.
And there you go, see? Okay, so, we move to city and council reports and comments. Councilmember Bonner?
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor to move the mayor, the city council meeting is one week, so it would be the same day as the RCTC, RCTC meeting today, but we know that's not the truth. Our mayor deserved, a well-deserved vacation with 19 members of our, of our family, and had, I understand, a very enjoyable time, so.
Well, but it was with 19 members of my family, so.
Oh. Okay, this, the RCTC meeting, this is Riverside County Transportation Commission, and it was the longest meeting we've ever had. And there's a couple of things that came out I thought was really important for Canyon Lake. Number one, and I'm going to read it, it said, "The I-15 River Canyon Interchange Project is one of the last remaining transportation in uniform mitigation program regional arterial project, and with the approval of SB 1, LPP 1, is now fully funded under construction." That Bob McGee, who was one of the councilmember many times the mayor, has been working on this project for literally 18 years, and we finally got it approved. So, we're very happy, and, but the, the secret is, if SB 1 gets repealed, then it'll go away. So, it's, it's really important that we approve SB 1 for a number of reasons, but we certainly need that exchange. Yesterday, I came down I-15 South from Central, and I didn't have to stop at the interchange, but the roads were about a mile, mile and a half back on the freeway, trying to get off that exit. So, it's really, really needs it, so we're, we're very excited that we've done it today. It was, it was fully, fully funded, as long as SB 1 gets approved. There's another one that was kind of interesting, and I, I thought it found it kind of interesting, it's called AV 1405. It was, came by the legislator from northern San Francisco, northern California, and what he has a miss, a assembly bill that says that if any company, business wants to advertise, let's just say Canyon Cowboy, or Pepe, or Pepe's, or any of our, of our businesses want to have an advertisement on the highway or freeway, it has to be approved by Caltrans, not by the people themselves. And that's not a good idea. So, Mayor, we've been asked, and I know we couldn't, because I just got it this morning, but we need to make that, Aaron, I think we're going to have a meeting sometime in April, and on the budget, maybe you could bring this up also for us to, because they, they want us to respond to this by June, because the, if the legislators are going to be holding on this.
What's their deadline for the, I'm assuming for?
He didn't give me the exact date, he just said June.
Because the idea was to have a workshop probably in the next couple of weeks regarding the budget, and at a workshop, but we can change that in order to do a little business if we need to.
Yeah, if you leave this thing total up to control Caltrans, Caltrans, and for, if our revenue for the Canyon Lake or any city is zero, it all goes to Caltrans. So, it's just not a good idea. And our citizens, our businesses, are now allowed to advertise and try to get people to come up to Canyon Lake. And I think it's just something we need to take a serious look at. Okay, that said, and the other thing, the slurry on River Canyon was supposed to start last week, but with the possible raining, it was delayed until May 10th, which is tomorrow. So, it's going to still be fulfilled within the 45 days of the contract. Now, between Black Horse and Suro, where the Canyonic Community Church is going to be the, the most activity, because we have to grind it through and, and do a lot of good work. So, but we're asking all citizens to be really sensitive, that for the next 45 days, there's going to be lanes covered, and be careful that we don't have any, we don't need any additional accidents just because of that. So, that said? Thank you.
Jordan?
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have a whole lot to report on. I was gone most of the month, for some fun and other things, but I do have something here that the chamber gave me today, which is interesting, because it came from WRCOG, and WRCOG didn't give it to me, so. This is an event, Solid Waste Committee Program, the 16th of May, at the Lake Elsinore Cultural Arts Center, which is at 183 North Main Street. And this is, is part of a modified Solid Waste Committee meeting. Did you get this?
No, but I, I.
Oh, okay. Well, it's a workshop, so that you better understand how to get rid of some solid waste and the proper way to do it. And there's a lunch that goes with it. It's a, I'll leave this brochure here if you don't have it, but the panelists are the Lake Elsinore Unified School District, city of Marietta, and Stadium Pizza. So, I've got a hunch, I might know where the lunch is going to be. Anyhow, this is on the 16th of May, and I'll leave this with the staff. The only meeting that I attended was Monday, the WRCOG meeting. There wasn't a whole lot that went on, other than, and this is something that, well, I think Larry is familiar with, the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency, it was formed for the purpose of planning and acquiring and managing approximately 40,000 acres of habitat for the famous kangaroo rat. The executive committee and RCA's board directors approved a five-year agreement that transferred the duties of administration and management of RCA activities to. the duties of administration and management of RCA activities to WARCAG. And so far, this arrangement has worked out well, and it consolidated, and which is a, it's a good deal for everybody. The other discussion was, there was quite a bit of Tump funds problems, cities submitting their funds, they're not doing it correctly, not everybody, certainly not us, but some of the formulas that people don't understand, WARCAG has to correct everything. So, it's probably going to be an additional expense, but WARCAG is going to suggest that you just turn in the information, and they'll do all of the computing and the figuring as to what needs to be submitted. Tump funds are, for those who don't know, it's a new construction. It's a, it's the transportation uniform mitigation fee, which is just about a $7,000 or $8,000 fee before, excuse me, before you start construction of a new home. And it applies to all the cities, so we're not, we're not singled out for that. And other than that, a reminder that the, well, the new, the general assembly is on June 21st. Hopefully, everybody here on the council will be attending. There'll be a new slate of officers. A new chair is, these people are expected to be ratified. Supervisor Chuck Washington will be the chair. Councilmember Bonnie Wright of Abbott will be vice chair, and Councilmember Laura Routen, City of Aruba Valley, will be second vice chair. These nominations will be confirmed at the general assembly, but it's just a formality. And I don't have a vector report, sorry. Well, I had one from a month ago, but.
Evan is bare legs.
Thanks, Barry. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
All right, it's Mr. Green's turn.
Thank you. Thank you. Been a very busy month. City manager said some of the highlights that I had, but I'd like to mention that Jack Wombley has been appointed, if you haven't read, to the Flood Control District by our Kevin Jeffries, so he will be attending that. Also, last month, the emergency card that the community put together to be a response card for things that occur on the golf course was delivered, and now is in service. So, that was quite an accomplishment to all those who were involved. We had an RCA meeting on Monday, and we approved the budget, which is $34.5 million. Of that, 90% of it is for land acquisitions to tie all of the conservation corridors that they've identified throughout the county that will be free areas for non-development for animals to move. So, so far, we're meeting, and apparently, they had, they went to Washington, DC, got a lot of high fives from those folks back there that approved the money, so it looks like some additional funds will be coming our way. As we mentioned earlier, we do have a county, or county, we're at citywide earthquake exercise we haven't done one in a long time, which will take place on this Saturday, which I believe is May 12, from 8:00 to 8 o'clock till approximately 11:00. So, we not only have the emergency preparedness groups that'll be out in the community, we have our medical folks that will be setting up at, at Eastport. So, those who want to be victims, or patients, we'll call them, could show up, because they're a little bit short right now. Councilman Bonner and his wife have graciously, after I twisted their arm, and said they would be victims, so we'll do that. That's kind of it. I mean, there's a lot of things, there was part of, part of a development team for the City of Temecula and Marietta, and that was for an upcoming exercise, not an exercise, a conference they're putting on, a seminar in the fall. And they had one, their first one was last year, it's for disaster recovery for businesses and government. And it was well-attended, well-received. We are in the process of developing the curriculum for this upcoming seminar. And with that, I think that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Briefly, I was out of town part of it. Not a lot of meetings, and I think it's going to get even scarcer as the summer goes on. It seems to be we drop them off, pick them back up. Student of the Month, I attended the last Student of the Month until the new school year. Again, I want to say to any councilmembers who wish to go, it's, it's open to everybody to come and attend these events, and it's really very nice to see and hear the stories, see the parents, hear the stories of these students that have excelled. Monday night, just in time for vacation, Councilmember Aaron Krantz and I both attended the Student of the Year, which was even more exciting. We'll talk more about that next month, because we'll be honoring. She's right here from Canyon Lake, so that was very cool. On Friday, I do want to mention, I'm, I am attending the opening ceremonies for the Special Olympics at Lakeside High School. It's open to the public. It's a truly wonderful event. Anybody who wants to come, the athletes love to have the fans in the stands, and you can even hug, if you wanted to be a hugger. I'm a hugger. So, anybody who wants to come, I believe the opening ceremony starts at 10:00 AM, 9:25 or 10:00 AM. I know I need to be there by 9:30. And, yeah, it's Lakeside High School and their new track, so that is, that is on, I can't remember the name of the street, in Lake Elsinore. It may be Grand. I know it's, that's where I turned, but I don't know if it stays there. So, anyway, please do come, if you've, if you've got just, even just a couple of minutes, it's a really great event to come to, so please join me. And I think that's it. Any further announcements? Next council meeting is June 9, 6:30, open session. Are we good? Excellent. We will adjourn. I wanted to do it 7:29. We did well.